The school committee workshop business session of October 27, 2025 will now come to order. This meeting is being recorded and will be made available for viewing on the Methuen Public Schools website. Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Member DeZoglio.
President.
Member Donovan.
Here.
Member Keegan.
Here.
Member Maxwell, is she online? No. Member Shabilia, present. Member Willette.
Yep.
And Mayor Beauregard.
Here. We need a motion and a second to accept the agenda for October 27, 2025 as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is from Member DeZoglio. The second is from the vice chair. Any discussion? If not, we will vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ice have it. Will now rise for the flag salute.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll have public participation. Sure. We'll start with Jay Jalbert.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Jay Jalbert, a resident of Methuen and parents of three Methuen Public School students. Member Willette, you asked me for an apology during the October 14th meeting. I emailed the committee on Saturday, October 11th, saying in part, if protecting the students is the aim of this discussion, perhaps starting with known and documented cases where the problem actually is reported, males, not transgender students. Three members reached out to me personally, as did the superintendent. You are not one of those members. It could be because on December 16th of 2024, you replied to an email to me which said in full, if that is the attitude, have a good day. I will continue to work with other constituents. True to your word, in nearly a year, you have not once reached out or contacted me directly in an official capacity. I remind you that I am who you are representing, whether we agree or not. During the meeting on October 14th, what I said was that you in particular will be fighting full bore for actual documented instances of trouble now that you know about it. That sentiment was born from emails you portrayed, concern for students at the school and bringing it to light when it is brought to your attention. You attempted to twist that while saying you were being gaslit. What you said throughout your diatribe was the very definition of gaslighting. You also said on the record that you listened and did not laugh. I did try to pull evidence about this obvious lie, but the cameras are not on the members when the public are speaking. We who are here saw it though. I have a note handwritten to somebody at my table asking to call you out on laughing during our speeches. I have a text at 7:18 to a friend who was not a member, not a Methuen resident and was not here. While public participation was still ongoing, saying that you and Member Maxwell are giggling to each other across the table while everybody is talking. That shows how much they care. All of this to say, Member Willette, is that you are not a victim here, no matter how much you try to portray yourself in that manner. When you are ready to apologize to the constituent with whom you have refused to work with because you disagree, while feeling absolutely comfortable lying on the record about me and what I said, you have my information. Unless you want to do it in a public forum in the same way and you attempted to call me out. Speaking of emails, I sent one to this group after the meeting on the 14th regarding what Member Maxwell said. I emailed and reposted, I'm sorry, what Member Maxwell said emailed and reposted, both to me personally and here in the meeting. I wrote my concerns very loud and clear. I realize as a parent, I am not able to add items to the agenda. Member Maxwell had said, and I quote, "If a parent brings a concern to me, I am putting it on the agenda." There were many concerns brought to her over the past two weeks, including my own. None of them are on the agenda tonight. Mine in particular was in regards to the students' use of bathrooms. On September 16th, Member Maxwell asked to remove gender identity as a protected population in policies. This is not legal. On October 5th, Member Maxwell emailed Dr. Quong saying there was a boy in the girls' bathroom. In her email to the committee on October 9th and in a meeting, at the meeting on October 16th, Member Maxwell said that transgender students should need to use gender neutral bathrooms because, quote, "a biological female was uncomfortable," end quote. Either she does not understand that gender neutral bathrooms are specifically for any student that is uncomfortable or she is refusing to acknowledge the population within Methuen Public Schools. These are my concerns related to the committee and Member Maxwell as a parent. Next, Mr. Mayor, will you allow a question from me at this time?
We're not able to engage in a back and forth, but if you...
I can't hear.
We're not able to engage in a back and forth during public participation.
Can we engage in a back and forth or no?
No.
Thank you. I'm aware of this rule, as is each person sitting here. This is not an open discussion. It is literally against the rules. Community members speaking, hopefully two, but more apparently at each of you, followed by you speaking to each other with rigid rules in place. While I appreciate what each of you do, both here and behind the scenes, to imply meetings are discussions with the public is untrue and disingenuous. The place for discussions with the public would be in the public, through private exchanges or on online public forums. Member DeZoglio used to do live Facebook chats and have office hours with constituents. These are discussions. Blocking people from official committee Facebook pages does not promote, encourage, or allow for discussions. More importantly, it puts you in an echo chamber with people who either agree or will not speak against you, be it out of fear or anything else. Writing on your page that, quote, "if we disagree, that's fine, no need to be here," is saying a lot and not clarifying whether or not that is... and whether or not that is not in fact what you meant is even though it's brought to your attention is equally telling. All of this is opposite of open discussions. Speaking of online, I heard a discussion on the October 15th meeting about reaching out to public via social media. Sorry, but as a Facebook user, I love this idea. I fully recognize Facebook is for old people like me. There are so many social media platforms that are used, it would be a daunting task. I agree that nobody on the staff is currently spending their time twiddling their thumbs and eating bonbons. Perhaps the first step could be reaching out to the PTOs. Could they disseminate information? Perhaps there's a way to designate what's officially from the schools versus their own posts. I realize not every school has a PTO, but again, it's a start. I like Member Shabilia's idea of local interns. Maybe the community at large has ideas that could be useful. I do agree that turning off comments would be a must. I know the collaborative efforts of this group can do great things. Look at the literacy program that Member Donovan championed or the policy subcommittee that has been able to cover so much and continues to work so hard. Look at the policy change made last fall with a simple request from a resident not to speak a home address out loud. I know you can all work together. I look forward to seeing it. Thank you.
Heather Plunkett.
Good evening. My name is Heather Plunkett. I am a current Methuen resident and I have a senior in high school at Methuen High. I wrote this amazing speech tonight and I was going to read it, but I thought it might be better for me to actually make eye contact with folks as opposed to reading as I want to make sure that everything I have to say is heard by the person I'm saying it to. Unfortunately, Ms. Maxwell is missing the meeting this evening, so I will not be able to address my comments to her in this forum, but I will still be able to say my piece. Interestingly, after the meeting last, on October 14th, not last week, the week before, committee member Willette said he was owed an apology. He was owed an apology for all the things that everyone is saying about him that just aren't true. I find that interesting because two of your fellow committee members have been attacked online repeatedly by someone that you are friends with and work for. I think you might owe an apology to them for basically standing by and watching it happen, right? After the meeting and after the comments were made in support of our transgender students, we've been called, and I speak for myself as well as other parents and residents, perverts, groomers, and bullies. So if you are associating with this journalist that goes online to call people, I'm speaking to you. Thank you. When we go online, Mr. Willette, I am speaking to you. It is common to make eye contact when speaking to someone, right? You can look away if you want, but I'm speaking to you. I'm addressing my comments directly to you, not to the board. This is to you right now. And the reason I'm saying this is because not only do you write for this gentleman's paper, but you have sat by idly saying nothing when Laurie Keegan's attacked for her child being trans or Dan Shabilia is being attacked because his wife was up here and spoke. He even went as far as to speak of Kelsey's physical appearance, but you do nothing. You say nothing. It's, who owes who an apology? I just want to say, Laurie, to you, I am so sorry for the way that people behave towards you and that they associate and are endorsed by this person. And I'm giving him way too much attention. I'll admit it. I'm sure he's going to eat this up. I can't wait to be on his podcast as he takes this apart and talks about what a pervert and groomer and everything else that I am. And that's fine. I will always stand up for trans kids. And there is no reason on God's green earth why anyone should have ever attacked you for your children. You are on this committee as a servant to the community. Your family should never play into this and sure as hell not use as a weapon against you. I feel so bad that I was not aware of this sooner and that I couldn't speak out against it sooner. So you have my sincere apology as a resident that I didn't come to your defense sooner because that is, it's just disgusting that somebody would do that to you. And I apologize. DJ, I know that in the past you have been endorsed by this journalist. There are people running for the school committee right now that are endorsed. Ms. Maxwell and Mr. Willette are endorsed by this journalist. This man that calls people names, posts the most disgusting vile things, has doxed people posting their home and their address. I don't understand how anybody can stand by that. We're all, we all belong in Methuen, right? We should all be able to speak our piece without being attacked online. There's just, it's ridiculous. And for people to give it any credence, and it, I just, and there's two people on here, Mr. Willette and Ms. Maxwell, that are friends with this guy. And it just blows my mind. It absolutely blows my mind. Dan, I want to apologize to you for everything that's been said about you and Kelsey online. And a lot of it is because we spoke out in support of the LGBTQ kids here at school and in the community and spoke out about a book not being banned. And by the way, I know Ms. Maxwell said, no, I'm not banning the book. And then in the public comments said, oh, wait, can't we just remove it from the classroom if it makes people uncomfortable? Guess what that is? Banning a book. If you're going to remove it from the curriculum, that's a form of banning a book. It isn't the opt-out, which again, that parent had every right to do. And apparently, Ms. Maxwell, instead of getting the answer for the parent with the concern and pointing her in the right direction of where she could get information, she brought it as an agenda item. And I don't understand that either. We have policies in place that have been in place for years. That book has been in the curriculum for over a decade, but suddenly it's this hot-button topic and inappropriate pornography and all this other stuff. And because I defended it, I'm just a grooming pervert, seriously. And again, you just sat there. Yeah, you can shrug, it's fine. Yeah, the camera's not on you, so I'll go ahead and tell everybody what you're doing. You're sitting back, just shrugging like, meh, whatever, just get through this, right? Right, Mr. Willette? You know, I'm tired of just of seeing people getting destroyed that are public servants and people sitting by and doing nothing. It just blows my mind. Mr. DeZoglio, in your comments, you said we were being passive aggressive. I think you need to look up the definition of passive aggressive because this ain't passive, my friend. This is speaking it directly to you and I will back it up in person, online. Anything I say, anytime, I will back it up. Yes, I'm passionate. Yes, I'm upset. And you know why? Because I live in Methuen and I care about it. And I care about the kids that go to school here. And I don't want any child of any family to feel like they are not welcome here. They can't belong here. Mr. Willette also posted the ICE hotline for people to call. I guess he wanted to turn in the neighbors, have people turn on their neighbors. You do realize that over 50% of our student population is Hispanic. And you do realize that ICE is racially profiling Hispanic people. So it makes me wonder if you want our kids torn away from their families? Is that, I mean, why the hell would you ever post that online? It just doesn't make sense. Yes, I'm speaking to you again, and I know you can't answer me. Can't wait for your comments. But again, this is somebody that is on the school committee.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
I asked if something was on the agenda.
Is that on the agenda tonight? Is that on the agenda tonight?
Need to keep order.
Yeah.
So we have...
Keep to the agenda.
Public participat-, yep.
So I did ask about if our comments had to be on the agenda and I was told no. You can speak to whatever has been spoken to or posted about by school committee members at any time. So if Mr. Willette wants to deny posting the ICE hotline, he is, he can do that in his public comments. Now is my turn to speak. It's my turn to speak. So I guess what I want to say is, as Methuen residents and as voters, as we go out there to cast our vote for school committee, let's pay attention to who's doing the work and who is causing Jerry Springer moments. Let's pay attention to who's endorsing people and who isn't. And who is really, who would stand up for the rights of every student? Every student and every family in Methuen. It's important to me. It's important that you guys work together as a team and not get on social media and tear each other apart and then come back and expect to work in harmony. It doesn't work that way. And if you see somebody else speaking out and tormenting somebody online, I believe it's your obligation to speak out against that unless you actually believe that people are perverts and groomers and all this other BS because your buddy said it over a book and over the, you know, being supportive of the transgender community. It's just mind-blowing. Mary Beth, thank you for all you do. I have nothing bad or even critical to say to you because you're always diplomatic and sweet and I'm so grateful that you're here. So thank you. And that concludes my comments for this evening. Thank you so much.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak? If not, we don't have any written public participation. So at this time, I will close the public participation portion of our meeting. If you can't make a meeting in person for public participation, you can send an email to Susan Shanti at S N S C I O N T I at methuen.k12 dot m a dot u s before 3:00 p.m. on the day of the school committee meeting. Next on the agenda, we have the acceptance of the superintendent's resignation. First, I would like to publicly recognize the superintendent for her 24 years of dedicated service to the Methuen Public Schools and her commitment to our community. We wish you the very best collectively as a body. The very best in what comes next for you. If, what we'll do now is we'll entertain a motion and a second and then we can engage in any further discussion.
So moved.
Second. Motion is from Member DeZoglio. The second's from Member Shabilia. We'll have discussion now. Member Shabilia.
So I actually called Member Donovan on the way here after a conversation I had with Member Keegan and asked, what if we vote no? Not to do anything other than send a message because you have the most thankless job and you have had it for, what, seven years now? Eight. So an eternity is what it feels like. And even, and I apologize to you, Mr. Mayor, but even worse than being mayor of the city because the mayor gets to sit at the council table or sit at this table and sing the accomplishments and the praises of his office, but you don't. And as someone who came into this office less than aware and filled with a head full of social media madness over the last couple of years, I've watched you work and I've seen what you've done for this district and I've seen what you do every day, even the, well, the small pieces of what I get to be a part of. And I think that there is going to be a massive gap. And I think that you are going to be a very difficult person to replace, which unfortunately, we're going to talk about in a few minutes. And I just want to say that I appreciate everything you've done and everything you've done for me and the district and all these students. And wherever you end up next, they're going to be lucky to have you. So it's going to be, it's going to be an interesting time in Methuen. Thank you.
Member DeZoglio.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Dr. Quong and I have been serving together for about five years now. My first few months in office, my first term, we, we had a shutdown and we dealt with COVID for about, seemed like forever. But it was a good experience for both of us, I think. It was something new for me and her and working together to make sure our district was able to do its job properly. So a lot of her leadership that I took from dealing with COVID and she dealing with me and how I wanted to do things. But we got through that and we, you know, we never, you know, there was times that we didn't agree, but we always seemed to, we can agree to disagree on things. And that's one thing I will cherish between our friendship and being a colleague to you. And yeah, like I truly will miss me calling you up at 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock at night for a question. And I hope for you and your family that the next journey that you have outside or in the area is best for you and your family. So I appreciate for all the time you've done here in Methuen and I wish you the best of luck in your future. Thank you.
Vice Chair.
I can't thank you enough for the years. I'm going to get upset. I've known you since my kid started kindergarten and we hated each other. We went head to head. We, we...
We've come a long way. I want to preface that statement because that was on the record just then.
Yeah, sorry. We have come a long way. I mean, we, I was one of those parents that was just a thorn in your side, nonstop. And we have come a long way and I have grown to respect you so much. And I can see over the past 18 years where the district was and how bad it was back then to where it's come and how much better it is. And it's because of your leadership as a principal and as a superintendent. And I don't know how we're going to find someone who is as dedicated, who works as hard as you and is always available. You are 24/7 available to this district. You put your heart and soul into this district and it's going to be a hard, hard, hard position to fill. And I'm very sorry to see you.
Member Donovan.
Well, this must be kind of hard, right?
Well, this must be kind of hard, right? I certainly am accepting this resignation with nothing but gratitude, respect, and wishes for the best for you and your family. I know, I started to make a list of the things that have been accomplished under your direction. And I know, I'll name a few and know that I will miss many. The creation of the Early Childhood Center on Branch Street, which some people still ask, "Why do we need it?" Well, we have this ballooning population of earliest, youngest learners with real needs. And that was so important. You introduced evidence-based instruction. You know, that was not something that was highly looked at, but you changed the way we teach in this community, and that has made a huge difference. I think the creation of our literacy initiative four years ago, where we brought the science of reading into our schools. And that's a game changer. And we have seen, we have seen, and we have the data to prove it, significant improvements. And we're continuing down that road. You've expanded the before-and-after-day school program. So parents in the community can feel comfortable and go to work knowing that their children are cared for before and after school. And then, my favorite is, like, no one on this committee has any idea what it was like to be in the schools during COVID. I was fortunate enough to be there on March 13th, which was a Friday, 2020, when we shut down. And while the schools were shut down, the staff, under Dr. Quong's direction, we never stopped. How do you get the Chromebooks to kids safely? And I can tell you, I think Dr. Quong was there one day when we were literally hurling Chromebooks into the open windows of cars, because we couldn't get close enough. We had to think about how we grade, because it was such a game changer. We had to think about the teachers who were rightly so concerned about their own well-being and their own children home with them. And what many people may not know is, Dr. Quong made us make sure every single child in that, in our district had supplies, because we knew some kids did not. We knew many families were just, we were all paralyzed then. And we spent hours stuffing envelopes with school supplies and then delivering them. And when a parent called saying, "My whole family's sick. My whole family is sick. We can't get out." This woman made sure someone made a delivery to their home of food. These are the things many people in our community do not know. We have an education leader, but someone who cares so deeply about our students and our staff. And it's going to leave, I'm not sure where we're headed from here. There's a saying in education, "Our harshest critics would last two minutes in a classroom." Our harshest critics would last maybe 15 seconds in an administrative position like yours. And I do commend you for your level-headedness and your calm in the worst possible moments. You've always looked out for the best interest of the students. And sometimes those decisions are not popular. And I do, will say, building on what Member Keegan said, you do have a knack of turning people around, including me. And so many of the parents I've worked with, when we meet, when we first met, sometimes it was adversarial, but it was evident. And when I think of some of my favorite parents who would say, "I'm not talking to that lady," would later say that, agree that you came from a place of concern and love and following the law. So I wish you the best. I totally understand why you think it's the right time to leave. And I'm sorry it's come to that, but I wish you nothing but the best. And I thank you for our own moments together. And one of my favorites would be, yes, the day that the roof came off the tenny, the day before Christmas Eve. And what you wouldn't know is Dr. Quong was there knee-deep in water. We were on the third floor, too, knee-deep in water, and helping move materials, comforting teachers. And it was fun, but we got through it, and we got, we got part of a new roof. But I do appreciate it, and I also want to acknowledge for some staff who reached out for me today to say thank you for the compassion you showed them during their own tragic times in their lives, other things that people don't see. So thank you, Dr. Quong, and know that I wish you nothing but the best. I know there are other communities out there already kind of hoping you give them a ring. And I know, I know your impact will be felt for years to come.
Member Shabelia? Okay, Member Maxwell is joining us via Zoom. Do we have any other discussion?
I'd like to-
Vice Chair? Member Maxwell?
Hi, sorry for joining so late. I just wanted to comment on Dr. Quong's resignation. And unfortunately, I wasn't there for the public participation, which, you know, just had a bunch of lies. But the resignation, I agree that maybe, you know, if we could vote no, I would, I would say that's a good idea based off of the audit. I think that we need to have a, an executive session regarding that. I, you know, personally, I can sit here and I can say that I think Dr. Quong did the best that she could over the past seven years, and I thank you for that. But over the last six, seven years, you know, I've come to you as a parent, and we've talked about mice control and bullying and all of these issues that came back in the audit. And unfortunately, you weren't able to address any of them. So I don't think that someone who isn't doing their job to the fullest should be able to resign. That is my opinion, and that's my input, but I just wanted to make that clear. I wish you the best.
I'll quickly wrap then. So I know Member Maxwell just referenced, for instance, mice. I just want to state for the record, just look at how much progress we have made. So I want to highlight facilities, especially the ground that we made up and the accomplishments, the accomplishments we made on that front. I echo what my colleagues have said here tonight. You know, tonight, I view this as more of a formality, where we're taking a formal vote on this, which we're required to do. So with that, we will take a roll-call vote, considering that Member Maxwell is joining us remotely via Zoom.
Before we do that, just a quick point of clarification. Just so everyone's aware, accept or reject, she's gone. You can't keep prisoners. This isn't 1920 Russia. We can't force anyone to stay in an office. But anyways, I will proceed with the roll-call. Member DiZoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell?
No.
Member Shabelia, yes. Member Willett?
Yes.
Mayor Perry? I'm sorry, Mayor Borghardt. Sorry. It just happened.
We'll move on to the superintendent's search process. This is simply on the agenda tonight for discussion. I think it is important for us, now that we've taken that vote formally, to have this discussion. It's a process that takes months to complete. I'd also like to point out that we should keep in mind that there are roughly seven other districts who are doing-
Seventeen.
Seventeen?
Seventeen.
Seven north of Boston, correct?
North of Boston, Massachusetts.
Seventeen across Massachus- there are currently seventeen superintendent searches underway right now, which in essence means that we are competing with 16 other districts in the Commonwealth. So this is something that we do not want to take lightly, and we do not want to, and I'm going to say it right now, we don't want to wait forever. So let's just keep that in mind. So we need to start the discussion now. I'll open it up. Member Shabelia?
So a quick text to Attorney Macaro, a quick email exchange with Alicia Mallon from MASC, and a quick Google search gave me a list of 17, plus Lynn, Cambridge, Worcester, and Bedford, that have all recently just wrapped up a search. Not necessarily hired, but closed their posting. So tonight is our opportunity to portray why Methuen should be a positive place for someone to land. Because I think we need to proceed somewhat carefully, because the narrative that Methuen is toxic and that the next individual is going to come into that seat and be beat over the head is why no one would want to come here. It's not a job where you can sit there and say, "I did this for that person, and I did this for that person." You have to quietly sit in the background and be hated by 50% of the people. And, I mean, we signed up for that, and clearly so did you. But, but it's something we need to make sure that we're projecting, and we need to project confidence as we go through this. Not only for the district and to attract a candidate, but for all of the employees in our school. The teachers, and the parents, and the custodians, the cafeteria folks, and everybody else. Because they need to know that we're here and we support them, and that we're going to set a function in place that is going to bring in a strong and qualified candidate that is going to help them achieve. Because they are going to get the grief of whatever failure we produce if we don't hit the mark. So we need to make sure that we're acting as a partner to this. And I think that that's the most important thing that we need to keep at the forefront, is that if we aren't portraying confidence and we aren't portraying the respect and the admiration for the people that are doing this work every day, no one's going to come here. They're certainly not coming for the pay, because we don't have the best pay in the district, in the state. They're not coming for the location, because we have nothing but traffic. We just need to make sure that we are keeping a positive attitude, regardless of how this plays out. Otherwise, we're doomed. I'll hold my rest until the go-around.
Member Willett?
I'm trying to reconcile this, because we have an election next week. Automatically, we have two members that will depart from this committee. I am beholden to a nationwide search. I want an outside consulting firm leading that process. I would imagine that City Council would have to pay for that process. So if we, we have the funds internally to hire the next superintendent, I don't, I mean, someone would have to explain that to me.
Free cash could be frozen until-
Okay.
The early 2026.
Okay. So again, a nationwide search, outside consultant, devoid of internal politics. And the person, whoever will be interested in going to a suburban district or a gateway community, they will know in advance, if they did the homework, they'll do a Google search of the regional paper. They will reach out to maybe colleagues. And they will tackle the issues of that school district, just like any competent superintendent. I want to make sure if the consulting firm wouldn't be similar to the one that hired the superintendent in Des Moines, Iowa, because they had major issues, because they hired someone who was here illegally. So I want a competent outside consulting firm. I want a nationwide search. I want collaboration between the City Council and the school committee and the mayor. I want parents involved. If we establish some type of foundation between now and January, I'm in favor of that. If we're going to have members of the committee manipulate the process in any fashion, I'm not in favor of that. The neighboring community of Wilmington had three finalists. Okay? It's possible to have finalists for a position. And people will want to jump at the opportunity, maybe to reform a system, top to bottom. And they'll jump at that opportunity. I'm not a person that's a person's half-empty glass of water. I'm a half-full glass of water. But I also realize that we're not Pollyanna here as well. We're not going to sugarcoat the problems that we have within the system. We're a gateway community. We have limited finances. The tax base is mostly residential. We don't have commercial. At any time, we might have problems with state and federal funding. We have a minority district, which I encourage and I embrace. We have ELL and profoundly disabled individuals. And I think it's an interesting dynamic as opposed to a wealthy community that might not have similar issues. It's a challenge. And I think that members of this committee, we, the last two years, regardless of how we felt on the issues, we embrace those challenges. So I'm going to bring that same mindset. I'm not going to be dismissive of a process. I will discuss a process, and we will finalize something, because we want to move that train down the road. So that's my two cents. Again, this is the infancy of this process. I want to set a solid foundation. If we're involving the Massachusetts Association of School Committees in some fashion, I don't have a problem with that. Outside consultant, national search, involve the stakeholders in the community. I don't have a problem with that. So that's my two cents.
Vice Chair?
So the mayor and I have spoken with MASC. They are not prepared to do a gateway city superintendent search. They don't have the manpower to do it. So that's not really a good option. We've spoken with one consulting firm, and their process would be to start by sending their people in. They would come to where the people are. They would go to, like, football games and basketball games and other community events to meet people, to try to develop a profile of a superintendent, of what, what the community is looking for. They would interview each school committee member individually. They would interview other major stakeholders individually. They would create us a profile of what we're looking for. And they would do that between now and December. And then, come January, they would start the nationwide search, okay? So when we're saying we need to get this ball rolling, there is a lot of work to do before you start putting out that notice for people and what you're looking for, right? There's a lot of work to be done now. And so starting the process does not mean selecting a superintendent right now. The next school committee will be selecting the superintendent. But we need to get it going so that we can start that nationwide search. Otherwise, we're so far behind the eight ball that we're not going to, we're going to have to end up with an interim superintendent, because we're not going to find anybody, because it's, there's just not going to be enough time. So my recommendation would be to speak to more consulting firms to get more ideas of what other firms would do, and select a firm in the next, say, month or two, and get this, this process going. And voting on the funds to do it, to allocate the funds, because we're going to have to do that. We're going to have to find the funds in the school budget. So, I mean, and I don't know exactly how much it's going to cost, but we're looking at probably somewhere in the $30,000 to $40,000 range to do this. And so that's where I'm at, and I think we need to move forward with an outside consulting firm that's going to do everything for us and bring us, bring the school committee, the next school committee, a list of qualified candidates to interview. That's my two cents.
Can I say something? I don't know how to-
We'll hear from Member Maxwell.
Just a quick question. So I know that Member Keegan just mentioned this outside company doing interviews and going into the community and talking to community members and school committee members. My only concern with that is, half of this board, this school committee, has rated the current superintendent proficient in a lot of her, you know, communications and all of these things. Are we going to be talking to the new school committee members that are elected on November 4th to get their input? Or are we just going to take the input of the current school committee? Because I think that that would be doing a disservice to Methuen Public Schools.
So to clarify, Member Maxwell, that was an initial conversation, putting out feelers for what we might be in for in terms of services provided. That would be something that would be done, carried out by the vendor that's ultimately selected. A superintendent search is not subject to traditional procurement, so we don't technically need to go- search is not subject to traditional procurement, so we don't technically need to go out to bid. We need to potentially get quotes if it exceeds a certain threshold. But nevertheless, it might behoove us to consider getting the three quotes anyway, something along those lines, so that we can compare our options. But that would be something that would be carried out by whichever vendor is established. That would not be at the discretion of the school committee unless we were to establish guidelines for the process. But again, this is simply a preliminary look, see what we're likely in for in terms of a process and that's something that's not determined right now.
So if they did have to interview the school committee members, would they be interviewing the current school committee members with two going out, or would they be interviewing the incoming school committee members?
So, I, I, I can share my personal opinion. I mean, I can't state definitively exactly what any vendor would do. I, I think it would make sense to discuss with members of the current committee and also any newly elected people. I think that that is logical and would make sense. But again, I don't want to put the cart before the horse. We're not at a point here where we're officially establishing, say, vendor criteria and specific things that we would include in, say, specifications as part of a request for quotes, package along those lines. This is just an initial discussion, but I, I think it would make sense to include everybody.
Great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Member Donovan?
Well, I hope before we leave this evening, if possible, we establish a calendar or, or set some deadlines for ourselves. MASC, if you've done your research, I'm sure you've all been reading in the newspapers about the incredible flight of superintendents across Massachusetts for a variety of reasons. I think we need to get our, our house in order right away. MASC says three to five months the search process takes. And that starts with establishing what are you looking for as an educational leader in the community. Finding a superintendent is not putting an ad in the paper and hoping people send in their resumes. There's site visits on, on people coming and going. It's having staff involved, lots of discussions. So I'm gonna suggest that we, at least tonight, commit to some form of action and also be prepared. Just because we have finalists doesn't mean that they're what we want, what our community needs. Also be prepared to go the interim route, which I don't think anyone really, I, I don't know how I feel about that, but I think we need to be prepared. And I hope we owe it to our community. Our staff certainly needs to have a sense of we are moving forward. Some people, whether here publicly speaking or on the board have said in the past, let's wait until the new school committee comes in. That would be so irresponsible of us, so irresponsible, because it's a long process and we need to be purposeful and thoughtful. So, could we figure out what we need to do next? MASC, I know, they've said, we can't handle it. They're trying to, I don't even think they have a pool that would be appropriate or even filled for us. So, I guess I look to you, Mr. Mayor, like, what do we do next? We know of one firm, one, and I know there have been issues across Massachusetts, most recently in Cambridge, Mr. Willett, where that vetting process went south really fast. So I think we're gonna have to be very cautious and we need to spend some money. So, can we do that tonight, do you think? I don't know how that works.
So, I think the, the first step in the process will be to officially get some quotes, so that we can see the different packages that would be available, the cost different, the, the difference in cost, et cetera. And then, from that point, once we have a series of quotes, then we can discuss as a committee what the next steps would be and, you know, we'd have to go through a whole process of engaging a vendor in a contract and going about that process. And so, I think it really does start with getting some comparisons between vendors. We'll hear from Member Willett and then Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think we need to establish a demarcation line, because we're gonna have new members regardless sworn in in, in January. So I think interviewing the members of the community, and that could be the, the current members of the school committee or the future members of the school committee, they have equal stake in, in the process. But in terms of just interviewing, the demarcation line is, is January. That's when you have a consulting firm, and then again, we're gonna have a broader search because one consulting firm ain't gonna do it. So we need to have a broader search. We had it with the, the auditing firm, we had difficulty obtaining an auditing firm, and I understand that. But the interviewing process, I'm, I'm on board with that. Involving our association, I was on board with that. The demarcation line we established. The, the new members and some, maybe some of the existing members will be serving on that board in January. Okay? That will be a nationwide search. That will be a consulting firm. And in terms of an interim candidate, I would imagine if you're doing a nationwide search, anybody internally that wanted to apply who are qualified and who can be vetted, and that's a very important component, because I know in Des Moines, they, they hired someone of a major school system that was not here legally in this country. And he had a prior, like, arrest record and he had major issues. So, we shouldn't be hiring that firm. So that should be first on our list. So, we, I have confidence in the, in the mayor, working with the CAFO, working with the existing superintendent. And again, I emphasize the city council because I'd like to have them in some fashion involved in, in the process, because I know city council has brought concerns about the school system to my attention. So if we have that demarcation line, I don't have a problem with that. I think it would be irresponsible if we didn't set up an outline tonight. But remember, January is a demarcation line. Thank you.
Member DiZoglio?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just gonna piggyback off of everybody. I have no problem with starting the search, because I feel like we need to make sure we're being competitive like the other districts are. But I do agree with some of the members saying that next week is the election, so those school committee members should have just as much of a say than us going into this process. I will agree to start the process as long as the election after next week. Those school committee members stop with us on the search as well, like interviews. No, 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 I'm just saying with the consult, if the consultant comes in and says they want to talk to members, I don't think it would be in my place, because I am leaving, to be discussing with a consultant until, unless those other school committee members are with us, just like Mr. Mayor was saying. He believes that both sides will. But that's, that's, I agree that we need to start the search process now. But I want to also agree that we're gonna include those future school committees as we get closer to January if they were to come and interview all of us. I want to make sure they're there as well. That's all.
And, and something to reiterate real quick, just for the sake of the conversation. So, just to clarify, the next school committee's gonna be choosing the next superintendent. All we're talking about doing is setting the table for the process so that we have, you know, we don't, we don't have the next school committee coming in and everyone starting from scratch on what would be a, it's gonna probably be five or more months, I would imagine, before we actually find somebody. Vice Chair?
So then I'd like to propose that for next meeting, we have the consulting firms, since it seems like everybody's in agreement that we have a consulting firm. So on, on the next agenda, we put on there that we're going to discuss the firms that we're looking at and we vote to use funds to pay for the one that we select, that we, that we actually select the one that we want and that we move forward with that process, whichever, whichever firm that is. And at that point, we can talk about what they're gonna do, because we don't know what they're gonna do until we actually have the proposals in front of us. We only have one proposal at this point. So, let's get a couple more. Let's get it on the agenda. Next, next meeting, we vote on which firm and how much we're spending.
So our next step will be, the superintendent and I will get, will loop in the CAFO as well, and we'll take a look at this from the call process and, and getting a sense of what's out there in terms of potential vendors, and then we'll have more to share at the next meeting. I think that's a responsible path forward. Does anyone disagree? Okay. All right. So, that'll conclude that discussion. We're gonna move on now to the superintendent's goals, specifically the bullying goal to review. I'll invite the superintendent to start that conversation.
Thank you. So I added, tried to capture the conversation that we had on the 15th and added a goal, district improvement goal number three, which is at the end of the actual goal, I, I don't know what page it's on, page seven of 10, starts on page six, the bottom of my goals. Does everybody see that? Okay. So, again, I, I tried to capture the conversation of what we were looking for, for students, parents, and staff. I met with my leadership team after our conversation on the 15th to, I thought we had a really rich conversation, which led to this goal about what, what our role as the school department should be. I think we hemmed and hawed a little bit about, you know, what does a bullying task force look like and who should lead that? So I did somewhat prematurely put in here, Mayor, that, you know, a task force that branched out to the community would really be sort of under the head of the mayor, right? And then, you know, with that, obviously it would be our responsibility, my responsibility, my leadership team's responsibility to then, like, go through all of these pieces of what we're responsible for, for the goal, right? We really were trying, trying to narrow down the SMART part of the SMART goal, because, you know, if you, I was really, I actually had sort of a grandiose idea about the task force, that we would do that and that that would be what I would be responsible for. That's a really hard thing to write a SMART goal for, because I'm not, I don't have all of the sort of authority, control over all of those outside pieces, if I'm making any sense to folks. And so, I just, you know, I think this warrants some further conversation. It sounded like everybody wanted to go in that direction and I am, and the team, I mean, we talked about the youth sports and the who could be involved, and there's so many different community organizations and sort of everybody kind of saw the notes I took that night. I think that's all, can come together pretty easily in this community. So, the goal here really is looking at what the school department team would do and it, again, I, I hope I captured everything we talked about. Again, I took some pretty good notes that night about sort of seeing where we are, what kind of communication. And I think the biggest conversation that I had with our leadership team is we really visually are gonna put this into three prongs. What are we doing with students, which is different than what we're gonna be doing with staff, which is different than what we're gonna be doing with parents. And so, that was probably the most, you know, effective and clear part of our conversation, that our students need some education on the language of bullying, what it is, what it isn't, how to, the how-tos, right? And it looks different at 10 than it does at 17. And so how do we developmentally bring in folks who can talk about it in large assemblies, in small groups, and just focus this? So we had that conversation about what does it look like for students, and we have a bucket for that. And then for staff, what does it look like? Same things. What pieces do we need to reassess our procedures, our policies, our protocols on bullying and sort of re-educate our staff on those procedures, policies, definitions, right? A little bit of a different conversation than we would have then with parents. And sort of how do we engage parents in that conversation? Again, the education, the, do we need to change our letters? Do we need to sort of relook at our handbook language to make things more clear, more effective? And so, I think our team felt really solid about this. And I, I couldn't, the one thing I would say, what I just described is really how our team is looking at it, sort of the student prong, the parent prong, and the staff prong. And then for me, there's another prong that is community, right? And that's where the task force would come in, right? All of the information we're taking from students, right? If we're doing these things with students and families in our schools, that language, that commonality should carry over into the work of the community. And how do we engage community members who are doing youth sports and, you know, all those other community engagement activities? So, it's here. I'm not gonna read every bullet. It's here for you. If there are suggestions or ideas that I didn't miss or that you'd like to see differently, this is, I think, what this evening should be about. If, as long as the mayor agrees to, I did put that in there at the last bullet. I'm gonna support the mayor jointly, right, doing this task force. And I think, you know, that may come after some work within the, the district and sort of getting our buckets straight and then talking about what this looks like in the community as a whole and who do we start bringing into this conversation that's not just about the schools. You know, I think we forget too, there's a lot of other schools in Methuen, right? And so, there's a lot of students in Methuen that are part of this community that don't have access to our programs and our assemblies and sort of our initiatives. So, you know, and vice versa. So there's some partnership there too.
Yeah. I'm completely on board with taking that on. Discussion, and this is only a discussion, we're not voting. Okay. Very good. All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the CTE admissions policy. We need a motion and a second to approve it.
So moved.
Motion is from Member DiZoglio. The second's from the Vice Chair. We'll begin discussion. I'll invite Dr. Golobski to explain the new requirements.
Thank you. So there have been some changes to the Massachusetts Career and Technical Education regulations that boil down to two main changes. The first being that there needs to be a lottery system put in place for when the amount of interest exceeds the number of available seats that we have in our programming. And the second is that we need to have an official middle school pathway exploration policy. So we're trying to think about how we're advertising our programming, how we're recruiting, retaining students, and essentially making students as young as grade six aware, and then providing students in grade eight opportunities to try out the programming here or see what we have to offer. So I will say that we're not yet at a place where interest exceeds seats, but we're close. And so we'll be looking to put a lottery into place. So I'll walk you through the policy as it's written here. Just some highlights. So a major change is that as of November 1st through March 1st would be the time that applications would be available. At this point, we already would have gone to, the sending schools are middle schools. Through our Methuen High School Roadshow, we would have invited students to Methuen High School, the grade eight students, to rotate through the programming, learn about other programs like early college that we offer here. And so they'll, they'll know that opportunity will be coming up. We'll also have opportunities for families to learn more about the offerings. But that will be the application window. And we are proposing here that we have an unweighted, fully blind lottery to which students will seek admittance to the exploratory program. And that exploratory program is for grade nine students, where they rotate through each of our five certified chapter 74 pathways and ultimately decide which program they'd like to pursue to work on their over 900 hours required by DUCY to earn certifications, job experience, and other qualifications. So that would be the application process. The fully blind, unweighted piece is important, because we think it would give every student an opportunity to take part in, in the exploratory program, should they wish. The regulations specify, the only other option you would potentially have for lottery would be to wait both the 10- would be to wait both attendance and discipline or behavior. But there are really strict guidelines on that. And so you would have, say, one entry into the lottery if you didn't meet the attendance requirement or the discipline requirement. Should you meet either one, if we chose to put that in, you would have an additional ticket per se in the lottery. So your chances would be greater. The way the attendance piece works is they look at the student's previous 270 days in school. If the student had been absent fewer than 27 days, then they would get that extra entry for attendance. The discipline piece is really narrowed to assault and weapons charges, which we feel as though would not be worth putting into the lottery because it's so rare. But should you not have either one of those on your record, you'd get another entry into the lottery. So for comprehensive high schools like us, this seems to be a fairly popular way to go. I saw that Waltham's going this way and they have several Chapter 74 programs. And this is just to get into the exploratory program of which we have plenty of seats at the moment. This would also apply at the conclusion of the exploratory program when students are seeking to pursue a particular pathway, should there be more interest than there are seats. There's also an appeals process spelled out here where essentially applicants would be put on a waitlist and offered seats in other programs. Perhaps they were torn between two and they might have entry into one. If they're still unhappy with the choice, they can appeal to the principal and then ultimately the superintendent if the principal upholds that original decision. So again, this is a rare circumstance for us as a comprehensive high school, but we need to have a policy in place. What we've been doing in the past is when we note that there's high interest in a program, we've had the flexibility to add additional courses or teachers. We're so fortunate to have the additional teachers from last year that were added with the budget cycle. So we've been able to adjust to student interest to date. And then there's a piece there that just outlines the maintenance of the records of the lottery. Regulations state that the lottery will be public and people will see how that will be done, which I assume we will use a digital randomizing platform to pull the numbers. So that is the admission piece in a nutshell.
Vice Chair?
I'm just concerned about not having an attendance component to admissions, only because if a kid is chronically absent and we then admit them into this program, they're never going to be able to make the 900 hours. So I'm a little bit concerned about not having that requirement. I know that the trade schools typically do. But other than that, it looks great. And I will agree to this if, since you've done your research, but I'm just giving you my concern.
Member DeZoglio?
So when I, and Dr. Quang knows this, I was one of the biggest advocates to bring in the after dark program here. And Frank Cirillo and I talked about this. So to your concern, the thing that I look at the after dark program is to stop, to me is to bring that kid back to school with the chronic absences. Because a lot of the kids that I talked to with Frank that went into the after dark program from all of these other communities, they were the trouble kits. They were the ones that had chronical absences. And this was their incentive because they were just kids that were just like, listen, I'm not going to college. I don't feel like college is for me. And they worked with their hands. So they couldn't, they didn't have the grades to get into GLTS. So this after dark program was to kind of bring them, say, listen, if you're going to be part of this program, you, because the way the after dark program was set up is you have to go to school. You have to be in the classroom doing good grades and then you succeeded. And that's why I kind of like the policy, the way with the chronic absences, it's not that big of a deal because those are the kids that you want in this program. I actually want more kids that are having chronical absences, except assault charges, I totally agree with that. But those kids that, you know, might be failing in the classroom, they might just not be that academically driven, but they're, you know, a lot of those kids might be working in their uncle shops on the weekends or doing all these different jobs that they just need that extra boost to get them back into school. So I feel like that should be the lottery first, getting those kids that have those chronical absences and having all those troubles. I feel like that should be more driven because that might actually reduce kids being chronically absent. And you have to pick the right ones. Obviously, there's going to be ones that we put in there and might fail out. It happens. But I feel like that's where, and I could be wrong, but I feel like that's where the lottery, is that what the goal of the lottery is, is to bring those kids that are having those troubles academically and giving them an opportunity and incentive? I feel like that's how those programs should be driven.
Can I say one thing? I know I just whispered in your ear to say something else, but I think that the, the whole point of the lottery, and I was here, so the Board of Education meeting that we hosted last spring was actually when the board voted on this, that all the technical high schools are now changing to a lottery, not an application. And it was very clear to, Mr. Corret and I sat and sort of listened to this. There were a lot of my colleagues from the technical schools there to testify. And the real reason behind this is the fact that our kids don't get the opportunity they deserve because there's an application process and they are left out of that opportunity. So what you are talking about, about all of our kids having that opportunity, right? They may not have had great grades in middle school. They may have been bored. Academics isn't their thing. They don't get an opportunity at a technical high school, none of them at this point. If you're not getting As and Bs with zero things on your record, you don't get in. That's what this is trying to combat. So, so in essence, you are absolutely correct. This is what we're trying to do. And I say we, the state, right, is to say, if these kids are in Methuen High School, they should have an opportunity in another public high school that focuses on technical education, right? Now, the, the part that we play is that so many comprehensive high schools like us have career and technical education programs, right? So we have to abide by those same new regulations with these policies that Dr. Galobski is explaining. But the, like Greater Lawrence, Whittier, Essex Aggie, they have to do, this is a huge change for them. And so it was amazing to be here to hear that, that, you know, and a lot of our colleagues were testifying against this change because so many kids apply and they get to select the kids, right? It's a different process. So, you know, and this is, everybody's going through this right now, whether you're a comprehensive high school or a technical high school. I think you've read, there's been a couple headlines about different schools doing this now. We all have to do this by next week, right? So there was a huge push to do this and have these policies approved. Dr. Lapsy is going to talk about something else, but I also want you to understand, because this gets complicated with the school committee. This is not a standalone school committee policy that has a code. This is a policy that we're required to have. It needs a one vote approval, much like us talking about a cell phone policy that we're putting in something. This has to go on our website. This has to be how we do business. But it's not part of the school committee manual and does not have a code. I just want, just because we've been so, in that, I hemmed and hawed about the fact this, the state expects us to have this policy. They will not call it anything else, but it's not a, you know, a school committee manual policy. It doesn't have a code of JHC or something like that.
No, that's, that's perfect. I was just going to add on, part of the fully blind
part in the lottery has to do with if students have been identified as English learners or students with disabilities that needn't be disclosed to vocational schools prior to the lottery. So they'll be needing to support those students as they would in any public school. And this policy is to be revisited by the regulations every fall. So every fall prior to the deadline, if we feel as though there's a need, need for a change, we can do that and adjust as demand may increase or decrease over time.
Member Shabilia?
I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm following, because I think we may have blurred the lines between the first policy and the second policy that you're presenting. So the first one that we're doing now is for the high schools Chapter 74 CTE stuff, the five programs. So that doesn't, that doesn't include?
Well, the exploratory is grade nine, which is, covers all.
But that's, that's next.
No, there's exploration. Middle school exploration is different from grade nine exploratory. Grade nine exploratory is the entry point into the Chapter 74 programs at Methuen High School.
And that's where the after dark fits into this?
After dark would be part of GLTS because our students access GLTS programming through the after dark program.
Right.
So what we govern is the exploratory and then the pathway of selection. And then it's a little tricky. The exploration is how our middle school students learn about what we offer.
And our Chapter 74 courses offered here at the high school actually make the city money because they get reimbursed at a higher rate. So we have every incentive to market those like crazy.
Keep growing.
That's kind of the point I wanted to get across is that I hope with this exploration policy, we are working hard to show kids that whether it's biotech or early ed, marketing, programming and web development, or multimedia production and broadcasting, all of which are worthwhile avenues to explore. It's, I mean, it actually helps us at the end of the day too.
Member Donovan?
I hope, if anyone wants to look at this at home, I really like, you've created a timeline of when you will be communicating and disseminating the information to our middle school students, which I think is fabulous. And I also appreciate the involvement of the Methuen High students who are in the CTE program, working with our middle school students. I think that's where your best marketing comes from. And you know what? I hope you invite the members of the school committee, like whoever is here in January for some of these, oh, there'll be one in December, for these, maybe invite everybody. But for these informational presentations, I think it's the responsibility of the school committee, given this is a moneymaker, sort of, right, for us to be present at these kind of meetings to show our commitment. So if you could give us the dates for that, I promise you, I will be there. And I hope I'll be joined by my colleagues.
Absolutely.
Really, it's really awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any, right? Anything else before we vote?
But we won't deliberate.
All right, we'll take the vote. Roll call.
Member DeZoglio?
Yes.
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 Yes. That is approved. We will move on to the CTE middle school exploratory policy. We need a motion and a second to approve it.
Second.
Motion from Member Shabilia. The second's from the Vice Chair. Discussion.
Just wanted to highlight that while we'll be publicizing the programs that are available at Methuen High School, part of our obligation is to make sure that students are aware of all the opportunities available to them. So work in collaboration with GLTS when they come and give their presentations as well. And essentially to do what our objective to is outlining to do, make sure all students have awareness and access in a way to get where they're trying to go.
Discussion. If not, we'll vote.
Member DeZoglio?
Yes.
Member Donovan?
Yes.
Member Keegan?
Yes.
Member Maxwell?
Yes.
Member Shabilia, yes. Member Willett?
Yes.
Mayor Beauregard?
Yes. We'll now move on to the presentation regarding the 2025 MCAS. I'll invite the superintendent to lead this off.
So thank you. I'm going to actually turn it over to Dr. Galobski. She's going to show the slides that you have. I think there is, there's a lot of state conversation about these scores this year. And I know I've been in different settings with different colleagues and so was Dr. Galobski and Mr. Corret. I think we have the urban superintendent network that, you know, is looking at the Gateway City data, which Dr. Galobski will show you tonight, how we compare against sort of the whole state, but how we also compare within our gateway cities, where we fall with the like districts that the state has, you know, aligned us with. But there's a lot of conversation. I'm on the Assessment Advisory Council for the state. I have been for three years. And I think people were really anxious going into this year without the MCAS as the graduation requirement and what that would do to our scores. And I think what we thought it was going to do, it did statewide and locally. So, you know, again, that's a lot of the conversation that is being had amongst us and how do we look at it differently? How do we look at our accountability data? What's the state going to do differently? So we're asking a lot of those questions. You know, are we just going to keep going with business as usual? So there's a lot of unanswered questions right now and I think you are all aware. And if you aren't, I would encourage you to, you know, do some searches, but I can send you some links. The governor has put a graduation council together. So now the governor is involved in what the next sort of thing will be that will be part of a Massachusetts graduation requirement. So there's a lot of prongs there that's happening amongst the state with, again, the governor plus superintendents. We have regional listening groups talking about what that next graduation requirement is. So there's a lot of things moving right now and moving parts in the state about what that will be and what our obligation is to do year to year until those decisions are made. There's going to be a lot of local decisions that we're going to have to be making. So without further ado, I'll turn this over to Dr. Galobski.
Thank you. So before I begin, the MCAS and accountability data is public and available on the DUCY profile page and searchable by district or school. And you can also move throughout the years if you're curious about specifics. Just trying to move my slides here. But just to point out some state trends that were also reflected in our district data, the post pandemic learning loss continues to be a major challenge in that the subject scores by grade and area are still significantly lower than in 2019. And out of all the districts in Massachusetts, over 300, only 13 of them have reached pre pandemic levels in both ELA and math. I did look up which districts those were. Many of them were single school charter schools. So large districts are still struggling to recover to pre pandemic levels. What was interesting was that in grades three through eight, there's essentially no change in math results. The scores were very similar across the state with no significant movement. In ELA, we did see an increase from 2024. And then as Dr. Quang mentioned, both ELA and math results are down from 2024, suggesting that it could partially be due to the impact of the change in the competency determination. Science scores reflected no significant change in grade five and lower results in eight and 10 when compared to 2024. And for the first time, the civics exam was given in grade eight last year. So I have a slide here showing the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations on the MCAS tests. And that will be the percentage change from last year to 2024 to 2025, but then also the percentage change from 2019 to 2020. then also the percentage change from 2019 to 2025. So when you hear those pre pandemic levels, so you can have a sense of where we're going there. So you can see that the state is represented on the left, MPS is represented on the right. And we're very similar in terms of the degree of change, increasing or decreasing by subject area. And for MPS, you can see that the gap between our 2025 data and 2019 is larger than it had than the state. So the pre pandemic levels were larger in MPS than the state. And while we're fluctuating with the state, we're not covering much ground in shrinking that gap. On this slide, I have the 2025 ELA results. And this is where I'm introducing the Urban Superintendent Network districts, and that's signified by USN. And so to recap, I believe I mentioned this last year as well, the Urban Superintendent Network districts are 31 districts with students pre K through 12, who are in the top quartile for each of the following criteria for at least three consecutive years. So total enrollment, the percentage of economically disadvantaged students, percentage of English learners, and the percentage of churn, meaning students coming in and out of the district per year. So we are members of the Urban Superintendent Network District, and one third of all students in Massachusetts are part of these urban districts. So it's a sizable group that drives a lot of the data, many of, many of whom are comparable districts to us. So for ELA, three through eight and 10, we're at or exceeding the rate of USN. So falling where we would expect to be with our like peers, yet below the state. So whereas we're all moving in the same pattern, the results would be similar to what they had been in years past. And here's a slide showing by student group, our ELA results, grades three through eight. And these are the percentage of students not meeting, partially meeting, meeting, or exceeding, and then the combination of the two. And that combination is shown against the USN and the state. So in some areas, for instance, in students classified as low income, very similar to both the USN network and the state. A significant difference between groups would be two or more percentage points. Otherwise, it's fairly similar. We have some similarities in our Hispanic or Latino student group between us and the state, although we do exceed USN, outpacing there. And our English learners and former English learners have some interesting comparisons. We're between the state and the USN, but closer to the state. If we move to our ELA grade 10 results on the next slide, again, by student group. And if you see a student group that's represented on some slides and not others, it's because in that particular grade level, there wasn't a sample large enough to be considered as a student group. So in grade 10, great variation between student groups. And that variation is reflected both in our like schools, the USN and the state. And I'll explain some of the rationale behind those scores just a bit. And the math results, three through eight and 10, very similar to that one third of students in the USN. And just behind the state as well. The student group slide for math grades three through eight. So again, our low income students, fairly similar to both of the comparisons, as are Hispanic and Latino students. White students, very similar to USN, yet behind the state. Students with disabilities with relatively low percentages across the board, yet we're similar there. In grade 10, math, one area that's striking to me across all these slides and something that I'm very much interested in proving is it's one thing to look at the meeting and exceeding percentages together, but when you look at the exceeding percentages alone, that boils down to very few students within that category, of which we know that there are students who are certainly capable of achieving at that, at that level, which it does appear to be a statewide problem. In science, for grade 10, actually between the USN and the state. And I will point out, we call the science scores grade 10, but really they're tested in grade nine. So those students from 2025 that we're calling it their, their science score, they took in 2024 prior to the vote for MCAS to no longer be a competency determination. Perhaps a theory as to why those scores are a bit higher, or perhaps those kids really know their science well. And then the first go at the civics exam, which was new to students and teachers across the state. Comparable or similar to USN, behind the state. So I just want to provide some contextual information. I'll pause in a moment for questions or comments. And this was shared with us, Rob Carton from DUCY. It was very nice to give a presentation at the Urban Superintendent Network meeting and mentioned some contextual information that might be interesting to us. So across the state in Methuen, the performance of chronically absent students was substantially lower than the performance of non chronically absent students, both in terms of scaled scores and the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations, which seems pretty intuitive. Again, to be identified as chronically absent, you need to have missed 10% of school days for any reason at all, excused or unexcused, does not matter. So interestingly, across the state, the average number of missed days for students who are chronically absent is 30.5. In Methuen, the average is 33 days missed. And that absenteeism is equated to the loss of one third to one half of an achievement level. So the way MCAS is scored, each score band is worth 30 points. So there's a 30-point range. So if you look at the slide here, you can see the difference in scaled scores between students who are chronically absent and not chronically absent. And this is, this is Methuen data here. And the difference in those scaled scores. So a student losing 20 points between the not chronically absent and chronically absent data there, that would be more than half of an achievement level. So that could be the difference between not meeting, partially meeting, partially meeting, meeting. As we all know, attendance is important for so many reasons. And we do see that reflected here. And so there's, there is some noticeable correlation, perhaps causation, between the change in competency determination and the grade 10 scores. Number one, the amount of time that students spent in the MCAS tests across the state decreased significantly after MCAS was no longer part of the competency determination this past year. The amount of blank answers increased significantly. The amount of students who wrote off topic essays tripled, and essays are worth eight points. So an off topic essay is something that is completely not in the realm of being close. We also saw a lot of blanks, and we saw a lot of zeros or ones, which might be a sentence attempt. So Methuen Public Schools grade 10 testers, there were 38 of our testers had one of their essay questions worth eight points, marked blank or off topic. Another 23 testers had two essay questions, which is 16 points, marked blank and off topic. And amazingly, five of those students who seemingly didn't answer two of the essays were still partially meeting. So that that might have been a change there. And I will say, Ms. Moore, our math department chair, has really torn into the math data and has recognized in this 2025 exam, some standards were leaned a little bit more heavily into than in previous years. And so she's gone back and revised the curriculum to make students have more practice in those areas. So while there is some affiliation or correlation with the change in CD, also looking at for questions that were responded to where we need to support students more. Before I move to accountability data, which is also linked to MCAS, questions.
Vice Chair?
This isn't one of the subgroups that you give us data on, but is it possible to get the data on the students who start their education in Methuen and are taking MCAS? Because I think that that's really, given how high our churn rate is, it doesn't really show us how well our students are doing because we don't know where they are in the, in the Methuen Public Schools education. So if we could get the data on the percentage of kids who start in Methuen all the way through, how many of those kids are, what percentage of those kids are meeting and exceeding and not meeting or whatever, that would be very interesting to me to see really how our curriculum is adding up for our kids, right? Not kids who are bouncing in and out of districts. The other thing is, is students with disabilities, how is that defined? Is it anyone on an IEP or 504? Is it anybody? So if I have a 504 and I happen to be allergic to bees, then I'm a student with disabilities? So it's just IEPs? Okay.
With any goal in the IEP?
Any goal. So if it's a social emotional kid and not an academic kid, they're still listed in there. And I'm really, really concerned about those numbers because if a kid just requires speech, for instance, we've got a very small percentage of kids with disabilities that are meeting or exceeding. And those aren't just our sub separate kids. So that really needs to be something focused on what is going on with our students with disabilities education that is getting such low numbers.
I can drill further into that, too, into different subgroups of that subgroup, too.
That would be really helpful to see where we're failing those kids because with those numbers, I feel like we're failing the kids. And we need to figure that out. That's all. Thanks.
Member Shabilia?
Dr. Galofsky, I, I don't know what to do with these, these numbers because we told a bunch of, what, nine year old, 10 year olds and a bunch of 16 year olds, hey, guys, take this test. It doesn't mean anything. And now we're discussing how they did. I just, and I, I can assume you've had this conversation in your superintendent groups. I can assume I'm not the only one to look at this and go, now what? Is, is there a good answer? Because I'm looking at this and yeah, it's bleak, but at the same time, it had no teeth. So the kids who may have done well, they got to leave early because they finished their test. So like, I just, I don't know how to, I don't know what weight to give this information.
I think we're all having this conversation. I would say this, you know, the test, the tests aren't going away, the assessments, right? Because they're part of the federal ESSA law, right? So states are required to give tests on language, arts and math. Now Massachusetts goes above and does other subjects and other things and does it more often. However, I think that's where the challenge is right now at the state level, right? What is DUCY going to do next? Are we going to, I mean, we've been using MCAS for my entire, I think my entire career. Yes. So a long time, right? So is, is the state going to look at, are we, are we approaching the assessments? Should we approach it differently? Should we? I don't know. I don't, nobody at the state knows the answer. And I think we also have to give, right? We have a new commissioner who's three months into his job at the state level, trying to get his bearings in Massachusetts, right? He was the former superintendent for Chicago Public Schools. So he is learning about us in Massachusetts, which is very different than Illinois and Chicago, right? So I think we have to also see what comes out of his office, working with the Secretary of Education and the governor. I think it's a, it's, there's a lot of people involved in making decisions about education, public education in Massachusetts right now. Way more people involved than certainly when I first started my career, right? So I don't have a good answer. I think it's something we still have to do. We still have to deem important. But we also live in an environment where, you know, every year our kids become more anxious and parents do keep their kids home for the test because they don't want to have to put their kids through that anxiety if it doesn't count, right? We do get that. And so it's a challenge all the way around. Everything about this assessment is a challenge. When it's given, when we get the scores, to have it be useful. I mean, we're diving into this, we've said this my entire career and nothing has ever changed with MCAS, that it's given in the spring, we never get the results, things are embargoed until, I don't think that's changed in my entire 30 year career in Massachusetts, that the timing of it is just not awesome either, that we can really do something with it to make a difference, right? Of teachers and us, we're, we're looking at it and making sense of it now, right? And then, and the state doesn't give us even the rest of the data until January on like our lowest performing kids. And they, they keep giving us data. It's hard, that's a moving target for us. So again, it's, it's there. We've lived with it. I, we do the best we can with the system that we have and, you know, try to celebrate our wins and try to look at, as Josh Galofsky said, our math department heads are looking at what they're doing differently and what was done differently, right? It can't all be that all the kids didn't want to do this test, right? So, you know, we're trying to, I think we were at an administrative meeting with the high school talking about this data to, to what we are, what we see at the high school, what my own daughter experienced at the high school is not represented in this data. And that, for me, is very challenging of what is it? Because I go through classrooms, I had a daughter who had the experience. I, I don't know what it is because what I see happening and how people feel about, and I'm, I'm just sticking with the high school for a moment because that was the team we met with kind of as a whole. It, it just doesn't, the, this piece of paper and the numbers don't reflect what, what I see and what I know and what I've experienced myself as a parent, right? So never mind being a part of this community for 24 years, but just what I experienced on the parent side of it as well. And so we're just, we're just digging in, right? We're figuring out, is it, is it chronic absenteeism? Are kids just not engaged? You know, do we have to figure out how to really share with kids intrinsically more that this test matters? And that it's helping us and it's helping us make sure that they're learning, right? And pride in their community. I mean, there's all kinds of, I mean, that conversation went in all kinds of directions, but I think that's the one thing. Like, we're all just trying to figure out what piece of this we can look at a little deeper and glean from it, what we can. Because, you know, it's going to be hard to glean much from students who just didn't. who just didn't write their responses or wrote off-topic because they could. And that has been a pretty large conversation in our groups, is the fact that, like, we did the open response and the writing. There's just, the tenth graders, for sure, just kind of gave up, just didn't do it.
So, that feeds into my second question. Are we able, or are you folks able to identify down to the individual level? So, we could, as a district, acknowledge those students that did achieve, like, they would have gotten their pass rates last year? And, I mean, I think there's something to be said for that. I mean, I think that by us putting a little bit of motivation behind the test, those kids who are going to want it to achieve, are going to want to be able to put it on on their college resume or whatever, will have a little piece of paper that says, you know, I passed the MCAS. So, whatever we do or the next body does. But I think that's something worth discussing as we.
I think the commissioner, well, the former commissioner used to send us letters that we could give out, that we did. But I don't know if this commissioner will maintain that practice, we'll see. But we also just got the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship letter, you know, to pass out. So, we have some students who did do well and will receive that notice that they will get a scholarship to state schools. So, we have, you know, we have kids who care. I mean, we're sending kids to Harvard and MIT. So, we're doing some really good things with our kids, especially the last five years, that we're sending kids to these top-rated schools that I haven't always seen in my career here either. So, it's that, to me, this is what I'm saying of, you know, we're really trying to figure out that missing puzzle piece. And I don't think there's a magic answer. I don't think we have sort of this magic unicorn that we're all going to be like, oh, that's it, right? Because it's a school of two thousand kids and there's a lot of variables. But I do think, Member Keegan, we've always talked about that, that the state used to give us those, that cohort that you're talking about that was here from third grade and tested all the way through and that we could actually use that just for our own information. And they don't give it, we have to get it ourselves now. So, I mean, it's doable and we'll figure it out. But they stopped giving that cohort data to us because I loved that. I mean, that, I think, when I was assistant superintendent, that's what we used all the time because it was more informative to our practice because it was these three hundred kids that landed in this tenth-grade class from, were with us from third, at least we could count, third grade to tenth grade, right? And that made a difference to us as, too. And it was, it was always, it was always higher, right? The percentages of progressing, passing, meeting, exceeding was always higher when we just pulled out our kids. But it still helped us look at sort of what we needed to change in our curriculum differently than just looking at the masses. There's a lot, I mean, there's a lot. We have, again, a lot of eyes on this right now, trying to glean what we can, building-based, grade-level-based, and certainly at the high school, looking at a lot of different things. That was a really long answer, Member Shabilia, of what are we going to do with this? But I think, you know, we do what we always do. We have to take it very seriously and we do that. And we take the information we can to do what we can with it to make things better, right?
We still have a bit of ground to cover, but we can take another, member Donovan?
I'll be very quick. I'm just really curious. I know high-stakes testing, this is being done for a reason. I totally understand what's behind that. What's the, do we have an idea of what's ahead of us, of what will be the next high-stakes testing? I read something about specific course assessments, like, whoa, here we go. Like, that's a lot on everybody. That was one thing that was mentioned. And what timeline are we looking at?
Well, a sneak peek at what's coming up is, I believe it might be the next meeting. We'll hear about competency determination proposal from the high school. And what they're looking at is the next several years because whatever is developed from the governor's council at the state will take maybe five-plus years to go into effect. But in the meantime, individual districts will have to determine what their measures are. But it will be something similar, too. And I think the idea is if, you know, time continues and the trends continue and the state may feel as though the test isn't doing what they want for it to do, then they will need to switch to some different measure.
And also, how many students? Do you have a number of how many students were absent the day of testing? Because that would certainly.
We actually had, in grade ten, an excellent attendance rate.
Oh, you did?
Yes. I think it was maybe a hundred.
Yeah, it was probably one of the higher attendance rates.
Because that was always the big push.
Yes, they all came. And many students reported that they appreciated not having the stress of the competency determination.
Yeah, okay.
But they did all.
They all came. That's interesting, okay.
Yeah, it's interesting.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, and I should say, too, along with the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, many students use this as proof of English proficiency for the seal of biliteracy. So, it does still have significance to many students.
I just want to point out that tenth graders still have not received their MCAS scores as parents. And so, those really, I feel like they should have been delivered before this report comes out to the school committee. So, I just want to give you a heads up that I still don't have my kids' MCAS scores.
Well, I was scanning them through the post-it machine myself and stamping them with Mr. Goslin. So, I hope that you get, I mean, because it was mailed out last week. I would have assumed you would have gotten them by Friday or Saturday at the latest. No.
Okay, accountability. All right, so accountability is the system which measures the normative component, which is the school and district against other similar schools and districts by size and the grades that they serve. And then, there's also the criterion-referenced component, which is when we talk about targets based on our previous performance. So, how we stand against others and, more importantly, how we're comparing against our own practice. Quick breakdown of how the accountability is determined. It's different between the non-high school schools and the high school. And that is because achievement is worth sixty percent of the non-high school, schools' accountability rating, growth twenty percent. And then, English proficiency, which is rated by students meeting their target growth on the access test in around February, January, is ten percent. And then, chronic absenteeism, advanced coursework, and all those other pieces funnel into ten percent. And in the non-high school category, it's just chronic absenteeism because the advanced coursework really rolls into just the high school. And high school achievement, only forty, is only worth forty percent of the accountability calculation. And that's because high school completion, which includes the four-year cohort graduation rate and the extended graduation rate, annual dropout rate, that accounts for twenty percent. So, that twenty percent comes off the achievement and moves into that area for high school. And here's what the points awarded for targets indicate. So, one is no change, so very similar to how the performance was last year. Two is improvement. Three is met target or met expectations. Four is exceeded target. And zero is a decline. So, the accountability data is broken into two groups. First, it's the all-students group, which is everyone in the population. And then, there's the lowest-performing student group. So, students with the lowest combined ELA and math average scale score who were enrolled in the district for two consecutive years and tested in 2024 and 2025 and are not in their first or second year of being identified as an English learner and were not assessed using MCAS alt in both ELA and math, the lowest-performing student group is, and grammar schools is comprised of students who fit all of those qualifications. So, the way this works is when we're looking at the lowest-performing student groups, we're looking to see that the current results from 2025 of that lowest-performing student group from the previous year has improved. So, has that quarter of students improved? The high school's a little bit different because they don't test in grade nine. It's eight and ten, or how we label the tests. So, every year, it's a different group of students who's classified as being in the lowest twenty-five percent. And what we're looking to see is that the lowest quartile of students in 2025 performed at a higher rate than did the lowest quartile of students in 2024. So, pointing that out because the highest lowest-performing student group is different students that we're comparing year to year. And then, the non-high school group or our grammar school group, it's the same group of students who are tracking their growth. So, that's what Dr. Koang was referring to, is the state does share with us who those lowest-performing students were. Usually, we get that information in January. In the high school, it's a little bit tricky. We need to figure out who those students would be on our own because it's different students year to year. Okay. Okay, so I have a couple of grids here just to show you. And this screen here shows all grammar schools together, so three through eight. And the green circles indicate an improvement in the target from 2024. And red indicates a decline in the target between 2024 and 2025. So, you can see most of the green circles for the grammar schools are in the all-students area, showing that the all-students groups had higher target ratings than they had in the previous year. And then, the lowest-performing student group had some slight dips. And otherwise, the target stayed the same. So, if you look at the very bottom row, I think that that's important. So, the percentage of possible target points. So, Methuen Public Schools in the grammar school area earned sixty-one percent of the possible target points for the lowest-performing student groups and earned thirty-seven percent of those points available overall for the all-students group. So, coming off the MCAS presentation and knowing that achievement accounts for sixty percent of the accountability data and rating here, that could be as anticipated. Next green shows the high school. The circles are a little bit off-kilter here. But you can see with the 2025 MCAS scores, points earned for all students and lowest-performing students in English, math, and science, zero, which indicates a decline from 2024, which we had just discussed. Some growth, although still a decline. Extended engagement and dropout, fewer points earned there as well. We have looked at the list of students who fell into that category of not completing high school, many of whom leave the school, speaking of the churn rate, have arrived at the school. Some English learners who had hoped to do maybe a year of school and graduate, not understanding all the credits that need to be earned and they're of the age where they are on the border of qualifying for adult education, sometimes decide not to stay on. Others who leave to go to out-of-state school, and it's hard for us to determine where they've gone because they haven't issued that information. If we're not able to identify where the student has gone to school, then that would qualify as a dropout. In terms of English language proficiency, maximum points for students reaching their target for a language development, which is excellent. And I believe, too, that that was the same on the grammar school. So, in both chapters there, English proficiency was strong. Chronic absenteeism, some points awarded, goal exceeded for the low-performing student groups. So, to sum it up for you, the progress toward targets ultimately lands with the title to indicate how much progress has been made over the course of the year for 2024 to 2025, based on those categories. So, MPS overall has been identified as making moderate progress toward targets, earning forty-two percent of possible target points. So, it puts us in that range, which spans from twenty-five percent to forty-nine percent. So, at the higher end of that range. This slide shows school progress toward targets. So, CGS and Marsh were both shown to have made substantial progress. Notably, the CGS had an eleven percent increase from 2024, mostly in the areas of achievement. The Tenny and Timoney, moderate progress. And MHS, limited progress, which was a six percent decrease from 2024. So, here's a breakdown by school of the points awarded for these major categories. So, achievement, which accounts for the majority of the rating for the all-students group. And then, the lowest-performing student group. So, with the exception of Methuen High School, at least half of the points were earned by all grammar schools for the lowest-performing student group. CGS earned the maximum amount of points and also earned six points for the all-students. And then, progress toward attaining English proficiency, three or four points. The Marsh had one of four points because after the accountability data came out last year, the state reviewed the ratings and found that the Marsh performed actually at a much higher rate than it had initially reported. So, their target was increased. And here's some chronic absenteeism data that I had alluded to earlier. So, CGS had a slight decline. Marsh, Tenny met their target. And Timoney and MHS improved, although are still below target. And that's for all-student group. And for the lowest-performing student group. Before I move on to advanced placement, questions on accountability? Okay, here I go. Advanced placement scores come out over the summer. So, I thought it was appropriate to include that here in our first overview of assessment data. So, in 2025, MHS students tested in twenty-two AP subjects. Overall, we had three hundred and ninety-one students who took exams and there were seven hundred and seventy-one exams administered. We had two hundred and seventy-eight students earn a qualifying score, which is a three or above qualifying because most colleges and universities recognize a three or above as college credit. So, the percentage of AP students with scores of three or above for 2025 was seventy-one percent. So, it's noticeable growth from 2024, which was at sixty-two percent and previously at sixty percent. We're also proud of the number of exams increasing over time. So, more than a hundred more exams were given in 2025 than 2024. And at Methuen High School, the students that take these tests also participate in the coursework, which means that three hundred and ninety-one students were exposed to advanced coursework. in the coursework, which means that 391 students were exposed to advanced coursework and are more prepared for post-secondary education. So Methuen High School outperformed the state in the percentage of qualifying scores for the following AP tests. So 91.3% of our chemistry students earned qualifying scores, 83.3% of English language and composition students, 81.6% of English Lit and Composition, 90% of physics students, 84% of pre-calc students, 65.4% of psychology students, and 95.2% of calc BC students earned a passing or qualifying score on their AB sub-score. And then this is the advanced placement recognition as issued by the College Board. This is another standardized award and recognition, which helps our students be compared to other students across the country for their achievement and accolades. So 50 Methuen High School students earned the honor of AP Scholar, and that's earning a qualifying score on three or more exams. 24 students earned the honor of AP Scholar with honor. So that's an average score of 3.25 on all exams taken and qualifying scores are four or more of those exams. And 28 students earned the honor of AP Scholar with distinction, receiving an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams taken and scores of three or higher on five or more of these exams.
Questions, discussion?
Very comprehensive report.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, that does it for our agenda. Any other business from the committee?
Just a quick note that there's no School Tuesday because it's Election Day. Go vote.
Not tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, not tomorrow, like the next one coming. Come to school tomorrow.
Twice tonight.
All right. Come to school tomorrow.
So, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, excuse me.
I, I would just like to mention your press conference today about Methuen Cares due to the SNAP funding being, going away for, until the shutdown. And I also wanted to know if that's going to affect our free and reduced lunches or our free lunches at all coming up.
So, yeah, thank you for mentioning that. Yes, today we shared that in anticipation of the upcoming freezing of SNAP benefits beginning on November 1st, we are undergoing a major effort to, in essence, conduct a citywide food drive to help individuals in need. We are collecting donations of food, preferably non-perishable food, paper products and the like. The eight locations for drop-off include during regular business hours, City Hall, the Senior Center, the Nevins Library, and then we have several locations that are open 24/7. We have the Quinn Building, the police station, and we have the four fire stations. We have the Central Fire Station, we have the East Street and Swan Street Fire Station, we have the Howe and Hampstead Station, and then we have the Bean Street Station over in the West End, available for folks to drop off donations of food. We're going to be holding our first distribution of food this coming Saturday. We've set aside two initial times. What we want to do is we want to see what we get in terms of donations. We don't want to establish, you know, this schedule over the course of many days if we can't commit to actually providing a service to the residents. So we're going to see what we get in terms of donations this week into next week before we publicize additional dates. But we will have as a distribution center, the Methuen Senior Center, this Saturday, November 1st, 7:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And then we have an afternoon slash evening date planned for next week, Wednesday, November 5th, from 12 to 8:00 PM. And we have a more defined schedule planned, but again, we want to see what we get in terms of donations. This is separate from the backpack program within the schools. But nevertheless, you know, this is something that we're going to be undertaking as, as a community. I have not heard of any impact of the free and reduced lunch program. I have not heard of an impact to WIC as of yet. However, if we need to, we will expand our current collection operations to include formula and diapers and the like if it comes to that. Hopefully it doesn't, but we'll keep all options on the table and until the federal government, the administration in Washington, et cetera, until they get their act together, we will do what we need to here at home to take care of the people in Methuen. Thank you for bringing that up.
I also want to mention that HIP benefits are not affected. And so if you leave a dollar on your SNAP card, you're able to go get free vegetables and produce from Farmer Dave's and Drakeit or any other farm stand that, that belongs to HIP. And so those benefits are not affected, so that's at least a little bit of money that people will be able to use.
And I can answer that. At this point, we are being told it's not being affected. If that changes, I certainly will inform the committee, but at this point, it is not.
Thank you for reminding me. Any other business from the committee? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion's from Member DeZoglio. The second's from the vice chair. We'll take a roll call to adjourn.
Actually, I think Member Maxwell is gone.
Is Member Maxwell with us? If not, we'll note for the record that she's departed the meeting and then in that case, because we have all members who are present and voting, they're here in the room, we can take a roll call on the motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. The time is roughly 8:11 and we are adjourned.
Good night, Methuen.